We will please stand and Mr. West will lead us in our prayer and then Mr. Upton will lead us in the pledge.
Father, we're thankful for all the meaningful lessons in life you've given us. And pray, fathers, we gather here tonight that any decisions we make will have a positive impact on the students and school system. West, if you give for students, teachers, and sports staff during the summer vacation season, may they all return back to school safely. Pray for the sick in our community, may they be restored to good health. Most of all, fathers, we thank for Jesus Christ and the sacrifice he made on the cross. God guard and direct us in everything we do in the holy name of our prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. Mr. Melton is able to join us via phone call here. We're thankful for that. Certainly, we've got a smaller crowd, but everyone's here. We'll move to item three on the agenda. Approve the minutes of the May eighth twenty twenty five regular session as received.
Motion approved.
Mr. Upton, motion by Mr. Upton, seconded by Mr. Henson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, approve the agenda for the June seventeenth twenty twenty five regular session as you have in front of you.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. West.
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Ashlock. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item five, public comment period. I don't think anyone signed in. We'll proceed. Item six. Discuss the director's evaluation and consider the director's contract. You have a copy in your packet of the accumulated totals of our evaluation of Ms. Monroe. You can recall kind of how I do that. We, in our evaluation, we have items from exceeds expectations to never meets expectations, and I've numbered those five to one. Exceeds expectations is a five, never meet expectations is a one. And so, on average, we averaged those out after everyone responded to the evaluation. And overall, Ms. Monroe received a four point two one out of five, which would be above consistently meets expectations and below exceeds expectations at all times. So, that's very similar to last year. I think last year was about a four point three seven. And so, we are required annually to do this director evaluation by the School Board Association, by the state. So, we've complied there. Additionally, if you filled out comments for Ms. Monroe, I will get her a copy of those as well. Again, overall, I think this is a very good evaluation for Ms. Monroe, and I appreciate everybody's participation in this. Ms. Monroe still has two years currently left on her contract, as we have currently. If you recall, we talked in our budget meeting. We did evaluate the pay scale a little bit during the year, and there are a couple of things that we could do to monitor that without really altering the contract at all. One, we just put her on, put the director's salary schedule on a level playing field with the other staff salary schedule. And ultimately, what that entailed was would be honoring more years of experience. We honor twenty years of experience for our staff, and so we've altered the director salary schedule to honor that as well. If you approve it tonight, that is what is in our budget. Additionally, to this point, we have not honored Ms. Monroe's law degree. That would, that would increase her pay as well to the top level. So, if that's something that the board would consider, we would need a motion to do that. And it would increase Ms. Monroe's pay slightly, which would put her on par with other directors around our area. Still, even there's some counties around us with smaller school populations and lesser number of buildings that would be making, in a very similar range that this would put Ms. Monroe to, if you so desire. So, does anyone have any questions regarding the evaluation or the process that we went through? Or any questions for Ms. Monroe? I'm sure she'd entertain us with them.
I think she's doing a good job at this time of page during the, during the, make, do we make the motion at the time to exceed the pay for her, Ms. Monroe?
We can, if you'd like to. We would need a motion made to honor her, her law degree. Her doctorate.
Doctorate law degree.
Yes. So, motion on the floor by Mr. Melton.
How much would that increase?
About four thousand dollars, actually, somewhere in that neighborhood, thirty-five hundred, if I recall correctly.
And what would that make the total for years?
Would she be getting paid on the doctorate scale?
Yes.
All right, she got a law degree, that's saying the doctorate.
It is a doctorate of law, yes. And then... So, when you go from the sixteen, to the sixteen where it goes to ninety-nine, three forty-one, and it would go to the one oh four.
Pardon me, I missed the first part.
It's at the, well, I said that wrong. I'm sorry. You're right. I was doing the sixteen to the twenty. The, the law, it's a hundred and five twenty-six at the ADS, and it would be one oh four, three oh nine at the doctorate. Four, four thousand, a little under, thirty-eight hundred.
Thirty-eight hundred for the doctorate?
I'll second that one.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Melton, and been seconded by Mr. Ashlock.
This is just on the ratings.
Correct.
Since she's on, she still has two years on the release of contract.
Correct.
Thirty-seven eighty-three, if somebody wants to...
Thirty-seven eighty-three is the difference.
Of the doctorate in ADS.
Also, if I'm not mistaken, that's still, I mean, that's not putting her over anybody in her area. If I'm not mistaken, I think we looked at surrounding counties, and we were still, I think there was one below us, and another six, so it was above.
I don't have the new salary schedules for this coming year, but it did put her definitely in the ballpark of the others for the others' year. From last year.
What I mean by ballpark is still like, like, five, six, seven thousand dollars, and somebody was like, anything.
Again, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Melton, and seconded by Mr. Ashlock. Any further discussion? Motion is to honor Ms. Monroe's doctorate of law, or law degree. I'm probably not saying that correctly. Doctorate degree. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call a roll. Mr. Melton? Mr. Ashlock?
Aye.
Ms. Weir? Mr. West?
Aye.
Mr. Henson? Mr. Mays? Mr. Upton?
Aye.
Mr. Sherrill?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. That's, we did that primarily for audit purposes as well, because we'll evaluate Ms. Monroe's contract and her pay. And so, we can, we have that recorded now as why we're paying her, what we're paying her, and how we're paying her. Is there anything else that needs to be considered in terms of the director's evaluation contract? If not, we will continue. Move to item number seven. Consider the bids for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and we'll do these individually. A, non-ethanol gasoline, diesel, motor oil, and antifreeze. We have a couple of bids there on each, really. Couple folks bid the fuel prices, and then a couple folks bid the oil prices. So, for, if you look, our current provider is Rogers Petroleum, that first bid there in your packet. And you can compare it to the third sheet in your packet, which is the new bidder. The new bidder, we are unfamiliar with. We've never done business with them. We are really satisfied with our current service provider. It, the total overall bid is slightly higher, two to three cents, depending on the product and the markup. But it, when we reviewed the, when our staff reviewed the, these bids, and I talked to Mr. Immerton, he is very satisfied, and we've received extremely good service with our current service provider for the diesel fuel and gasoline. We'll consider it, I guess, first.
You get a bid, that was at that date.
Right.
They're gonna change every night anyway, so.
Yeah, they rise up May thirtieth, you can see there.
Yeah, it changes nightly, so as long as we're satisfied with the rule of God. Because of what we got.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Upton. I hear it, seconded. Got a bunch of seconds. Same as Weir. For Rogers Group, for diesel and gasoline. Any discussion? Again, that is for Rogers Group, our current service, Rogers Petroleum, our current service provider. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So now, we'll consider the motor oil and antifreeze. Again, our current service provider is the second page there in Napa of Livingston, and you can compare it to that third sheet as well that we just looked at. The things of note that Mr. Immerton made note of, I think that are something we should consider. One, the ten W forty and the twelve quarts and the five quart. It's what he, basically, the, the twelve quart, uh, quarts of castrol is what he uses the most. And the diesel oil, fifty-five gallon drum of Rotella. He does not use the antifreeze as much. He might buy one fifty-five gallon drum of that a year or so. So, there are some savings on that with, with the new bid on the antifreeze. But based on his uses, we're using the other, the motor oil is a lot more, buying a lot more of those than we are the antifreeze. So, the, the motor oil is cheaper with our current service provider. And again, we've had no issues with, with our current service whatsoever. David's very pleased with our current provider. Mr. Mays, I have a motion to, to Napa, seconded by Mr. West. Any discussion? No, sir. This is, we, we awarded Rogers Petroleum the bid for gasoline and diesel already. They did not bid the oil. Napa and the new service provider also bid the oil. So, we're now, we're talking about motor oil and the, and antifreeze currently, which Rogers did not bid. Oh, that's all right. Yes, sir. So, Napa is our current service provider of these products. Again, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. May, seconded by Mr. West. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So that will bring us to item seven B for propane fuel. We did receive two bids there for propane. Our current service provider is cheaper, and again, we've had no issues with our service provider there. Sherrill, Tri-County, seconded by Mr. May. Any discussion? Motion on the floor is to go with our current service provider, Tri-County propane. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now, item seven C, dust mops and mats. We did receive two bids there again this year. The first bid in your packet is from Industrial Dust Control. That is our current service provider. Been extremely satisfied with their service. They are a little bit higher than UniFirst. And again, we've, we've been down that road before, and they would talk about this every year, but we did leave our current service provider, provider Industrial, a few years ago, and we were back within the mines.
UniFirst is the one we went with.
Make the motion to go with Industrial.
All in favor? Motion to use Industrial. By Mr. West. Seconded by Mr. Upton. Any discussion? Again, a motion on the floor is to go with our current service provider, Industrial. Motion by Mr. West, seconded by Mr. Upton. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to item number eight. Consider the bids for a new telephone system at Hermitage Springs School. You have, we just got one bid, correct? You have a copy of that bid in your packet. It is from North Central. Because of the service area, it is a, it is a landline because of the service area. That's really the only bid we could receive. We considered some sort of IP service, internet-based service. However, the concern there is if power's out, internet's out, there's no phone service. That's probably when you need it the most. So, that, we wanted to stay away from that, and we have been having some trouble. How old is this system?
I don't know how old it is, but we're, we went down the last time, and we were down for quite a few days before they could get us fixed, which is unacceptable when you have too many kids over there during the day, so. They did say that they did not think that the next time it went down, they couldn't promise us that they would get it back up. So, we're hoping that they can get this installed before school starts.
Exactly.
And it's, it's not a system that we...
It's in, it is in the current budget. That it is. Motion by Mr. Sherrill. Seconded by Mr. Upton. Except the bid from North Central for the telephone system in Hermitage Springs School. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine, consider the proposals for the annual school activity audit. Again, we only received one proposal. Slight increase from last year, but still very inexpensive for what she's doing. She's always provided good service and a good resource for, for our folks. Motion by Mr. Sherrill. Let us second by Mr. Henson. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to item ten, consider quotes for custodial supplies. This is something a little, this is new. We, we haven't done this in the past. For years and years, our service provider, if you, if you're looking at your packet there, has been Levin Chemical. And so, I actually went and got, got a couple of other companies to quote the products that we're using currently. And there's no, not a lot of desire to split, go down the list here. But...
I did, I did ask American Paper Twine, sorry to interrupt, but you and I spoke about that for a second. She cannot honor the forty-nine ninety-nine without the whole thing. So, I didn't want you to say that out loud, it'd be the opposite. But she said that she wasn't even a hundred percent sure she could do the forty-nine ninety-nine. I was gonna have to do a letter to release pricing to her, and then she would give us the price. So, with that being said, it's that middle one, the Kelsan, is the lowest price anyway, even with their fifty-six, sixty-five on the paper towels. I didn't figure that she could, I mean, I don't know that she could, she can't change the forty-nine. It's definitely not gonna be less than that, I'll say that, so. Levin Chemical has been very good to us. We have no trouble with them as a vendor. They have been good to bring the products in, separate by school, so it's easy to disperse. We order in bulk to try to save money instead of doing like, once every two weeks, we have a replenishment of supplies. We also think that helps them saving the schools because they've got their twenty boxes, and they try to make sure that they're taking care of it and make it last because they, they know that quarterly that we try to place an order. Kelsan, we have not had, but we, they, none of these will make us sign contracts. So, if we don't have good services based on the pricing, that's something we could come back to the drawing board with you all and be like, hey, this isn't working, and there's nothing holding us to that. I had that conversation with all three of them, so.
So, do you need a motion?
I do, to go with Kelsan based on that pricing. Kelsan was also the only one...
That's just the way they did their bid. We were talking about that earlier at the top, I think.
Nothing to do with this, you can back it to him?
No.
No.
No. And Kelsan was the only one that would give me, that would tell me that I would have this pricing for any year. Now, we'll see how that goes too. If they come back to the drawing board in, in three months or six months and say, hold on, we're gonna have to have a price increase again. I can go get more quotes, bring it back to you all, and start over again if we need to. The reason why we're doing this, and we've not really done it as much before, is because, basically, it's, it's in your paper towels, trash bags, and toilet tissue. The price of all of that has gone up since COVID. So, we are getting to where we're approaching the ten thousand dollar mark. Your board policy says between ten and twenty-five, we'll get three quotes, and we'll consider those, so that's what we're doing it. We're not at the twenty-five mark per, it's twenty-five thousand for one item, but we are approaching, we have four, paper towels, toilet tissue, and trash bags, so.
Motion by Mr. May. Go with Kelsan. Seconded by Mr. Ashlock. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item eleven, consider the transfer funds within any major classification of the general purpose school budget and school nutrition program budget to meet obligations by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Was this new last year, Ashley? We have to...
No, that's just where we at the end are setting up receivables, accountables, doing transfers with journal entries. If we coded something out of the wrong thing, putting in direct calls from federal to general. It's just all the normal things that we always do. You just have to give us a approval to do them all, at the end, clean it up, and close it.
Come back to motion.
Motion by Mr. Sherrill.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Upton. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item twelve, consider the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six general purpose school budget. You have a copy of the proposed budget in your packet. We discussed this in the link in our planning session. I think what it changed, about five, three hundred dollars or something. From what we talked about, Ashley told us that she would make those necessary changes. I think one was the audit, and the other was just rounding.
To be the audit with audit, and the other was just rounding.
So, we have three hundred bucks?
Yes. I would say if you were comfortable with it on, on last Thursday, you'll probably be comfortable with it tonight. Motion by Mr. Ashlock. Seconded by Mr. May. Any discussion? I don't see any cheers. I don't know, maybe, we worked on a capital project. It does include the, the raise to get our teachers' starting pay to the state minimum. Also includes the seventy-five cent raise for our non-certified staff. Those are the big ticket items.
Some of you like to know what the growth is. The growth this year in the P value is forty-three nine oh two.
And we have a motion on the floor with Mr. Ashlock, seconded by Mr. May to consider, accept the proposed school budget. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to thirteen, consider the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school nutrition program budget. You have a copy of that as well. We discussed this on the list here last Thursday night as well. Again, it does include ultimately free lunch and breakfast for all. Yes. The raise is reflected. Motion by Mr. Sherrill.
Seconded by Mr. West.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, consider the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six certified personnel salary schedule. You have a copy of the certified personnel salary schedule in your packet. This does reflect the new starting salary. You can see that bachelor teachers and principals are at forty-seven. Um, this does reflect, uh, the new starting salary, you can see that bachelor, uh, teachers and principals are at forty-seven thousand, so we go up from there. That, uh, again, is reflected in our budget and required by the state standard, through the governor's initiative.
That also includes that director's salary schedule, they're both certified, so.
It goes from the seventeen to twenty?
Right, it was up to sixteen, so it reflects seven, eight years of experience for seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Make a motion to accept the twenty-five, twenty-six certified personnel salary.
Motion by Mr. Ashlock. Seconded by Miss Weird. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Ah. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item fifteen, consider the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six support personnel salary schedule. You also have a copy of that in your packet. Couple things there, one, it does reflect the, uh, seventy-five cent raise across the board. Um, there's also one new, uh, job title, right, for a trainee position ultimately. Um, but we expect one of our, um, accountants at the, uh, in the grade school and the schools to retire, and so we put a line out of in here for a trainee position. Uh, which would be slightly under the pay, um, for the full-time personnel.
Make a motion to accept the twenty-five, twenty-six support personnel title.
Motion by Mr. Ashlock.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Upton. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Ah. Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, sixteen, consider the proposed edits to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six elementary and high school handbooks on second reading. Um, as we said there, this is second reading, the changes, um, are primarily related to, um, baits, E sigs, those sorts of things, and then our school emergency, uh, protocol as well in, uh, both high schools and, uh, elementary. Also in the high school, uh, there is a, uh, we've identified a different type of diploma for the tri-star scholar, and you can read about that, it's a program that students can participate in, be awarded based on their achievements. Again, this is second reading.
Make a motion to accept the change.
Motion by Mr. Cheryl. Seconded by Miss Weird. Any discussion? We did talk about last time briefly, uh, the cell phone policy, and, uh, a lot of school systems are reviewing those. Um, our administration felt like ours was sufficient working as children, so, uh, didn't choose to make any changes. Just wanna make that, make everyone aware of that. Again, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Cheryl, seconded by Miss Weird. Any discussion? If not, all in favor? Ah. Any opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to our principals report. First of all, I'd like to welcome Dr. Tinsley with us tonight, it's his first meeting, and, uh, so we're, I'm sure you got a lengthy report for us, correct?
No, I, I wonder what I could say, thank you, uh, to the principal of like any high school, I'm, I'm excited about it, I'm, I'm looking forward.
Glad to have you back home.
Appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Maxville, I guess that, thank us to you.
That's pretty lengthy. Hell of a rain, no weeds.
That's good.
Uh, we started summer school on June the second, everything's going well, so it seems to be enjoying the learning experience. And the last day is next Tuesday, twenty-fourth. Uh, we've been working hard to get all the classrooms ready for the, the next school year. Uh, want to thank Ms. Teresa, Ms. Tammy, and Ms. Donna for working so hard and getting all the floors, uh, looking in great shape for in our building. Uh, I want to express my appreciation for our teachers who have been coming out this summer after the floor's been waxed and getting their rooms ready and set up for next year. Uh, we have boys and girls basketball camps finishing up this, for the summer. Uh, we have had rock spread in front of the school to extend our parking lot, uh, for more options, so, been pretty good.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for our principal? If not, that'll bring us to the director's report, Mr. Drog.
Well, it's just a busy time, we're trying to get ready for next school year and close up the door, we're finishing up. As they said, only tomorrow and Monday and Tuesday left, I'm sorry, Friday and Monday, Tuesday left in the summer program. The kids and the teachers in the summer program are working really hard as well, so we're looking forward to a new school year.
Any questions for Mr. Drog?
Ma'am? Did, did we have several move, uh, quit, or go somewhere else? Did, did we have a big lot of turnovers or anything? I haven't heard anything.
Well, well, you hear rumors in the county all the time about that. We probably won't know about some of that stuff until closer to school starting. I think we're down to nine eighty-two officially, right? Ashley.
On the same.
Yeah, on our, our student count.
Teachers, those, have they, have they, any teachers left or anything?
Not yet, not yet. Sometimes, sometimes that happens in July, but, you know.
We'll always have some of that, always.
Is everything?
Retirements, we had some retirements.
Two spots? Did you get a list of the teachers when you gave them a sign?
Sure.
Go, go. How many's in the central office, how many's?
Go down the room.
Go down the room. But you count, uh, everybody, the.
Yeah, I counted, uh, uh, two.
Yeah, everybody.
Yeah. All kind of thing, all my bunch.
Since I've been here, we've taken the central office numbers down, Ashley, we've had about two or three. I can think of two, I lost about, we don't wanna call names, but with people retired or done what they, that we've done hiring back.
Any more questions for Mr. Drog? I would bring your attention to, in the back of your packet, um, you've got, uh, several, um, pieces of documentation from our school support organizations. Um, annually, our policy requires, uh, those organizations to, uh, report to the board, Ashley's assembled those for us. And, um, all currently are in compliance, all of our school support organizations, uh, that we have active have, uh, I don't, this may be the first year we've got them all at the right time, maybe second. Uh, but, uh, everybody has, um, provided the information requested, uh, per our policy, so you can, uh, take a look at these. And, um, one, understand a little bit more about some of the organizations that are supporting our students and are supporting the program, but also give you a little information, um, just about their, uh, finances as well, which again is required. I guess that's state law and policy. But, we don't need to take any action, but, uh, it is for your information. Is there any other business that needs to be considered before the board at this time? If not, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, seconded by Mr. Henson. All in favor? Ah. Leading adjourn.